John Grant.
Anthony Sutton.
Carl S. Moore.
Tom Nichol.
Tom Panzella.
Jim Quish.
And our board chair, Scott Marlowe. We're also joined by David Solkas, city planner, and to introduce Meg Green, who will be the new recording secretary for the board during our meetings. All right, first item is staff report, but we'll address that at the end, so we'll move on to item D. Proposed text regulation amendment. Item one, petition of Thomas B. Lynch Esquire on behalf of Beach Village LLC to amend section 3.17.2.16, item two, and 3.17.2.16, item four, of the Milford zoning regulations to allow mixed-use buildings in the CDD-2 zone with less than 20% commercial. And just to read Article three, section 3.17.2.16, two, and four as follows. Item two is, "In case of a lot that is wholly or partially in the AE-12 flood zone and containing four or more acres, the total gross flurry devoted to commercial use shall be 5.5%, and the remaining use shall be residential." And item four is, "The balance of the total gross area of the buildings in a mixed residential use shall contain one or more of the following uses." And items A through E are unchanged. Attorney Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thomas Lynch, I'm representing Beach Village LLC on these applications, and in fact, we are going to be withdrawing these applications tonight. I'll give you a little bit of background. Some of the board members weren't on the board back in 2015, when we presented a similar application such as this, and an approval was granted by the board for both the regulation change in this zone, as well as the amended site plan that we had put forth. An appeal was taken to Superior Court, and we refiled this application to basically address the court ruling. We then became aware, through discussions with some of the neighbors, that there were some additional concerns. My client and a group of those neighbors did have discussions last week, and the net result of those discussions is that we are going to amend the plans even further to address the neighbors' concerns. And in discussing this morning with David how to proceed, we were going to ask to table this application tonight, but with the resulting change to the site plan that we anticipate, we felt procedurally it would be better to withdraw the application and refile. So to make a long story short, that's what we're doing. We're going to make your evening a little bit shorter by doing so, and hopefully come back with something that will please everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Lynch. Next item is, well, 30 East Broadway won't be dealt with now because that's connected to this. So item E is a public hearing left open, and it's, "Item three is proposed zoning regulation text changes. Petition of Metro 150 LLC to amend the following language of sections 3.16.2.2, CDD-1, and 5.1.4 Figure 4." And it's amend section 3.16.2.2 to remove the requirement that multifamily residential buildings are only permitted in the CDD-1 zone when at least 30% of the units are defined as affordable housing, in accordance with Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Amend section 3.16.2.2, item 4, paragraph B, to reduce the permitted minimum square footage of one-bedroom units in multifamily residential buildings in the CDD-1 zone to 700 square feet, and amend section 5.1.4 Figure 4 to set the following minimum off-street parking requirements for multiple-family dwellings in the CDD-1 zone. A, minimum required parking spaces of 1 to 1 1/2 per efficiency bedroom unit; B, minimum required parking spaces of 1 1/2 to 2 per one-bedroom unit; and C, minimum required parking spaces of 2 to 2 1/2 per two-bedroom units. All right, whoever is going to present this? Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Robert Smith. I'm the managing director of Metro Star Properties, 50 Cherry Street here in Milford, and we are the member of Metro 150 LLC. With me tonight, we have Ray Pear from West Cotton Mapes, our project engineer; John Wicco from John Wicco Architects, the project architect; Dave Sullivan from Maloney McRoom, the projects traffic engineer; and also Attorney Knopf is on vacation this week, so we have his associate attorney, Sue Chin, with us as well. And I guess we're following your lead.
I guess the first thing to do would be is to go over the reasoning behind the text changes of why you would like to do this.
The, I thought we did discuss this previously, but we can do it.
I'd like to just review it, because we're going to deal with the text changes first, and then we'll deal with the other part.
Sure, sure. The first one was reducing the minimum size from 800 to 700 square feet, very consistent with the CDD-1 other. The mixed-use actually is a 550-square-foot minimum, very consistent with all the other zones in town, very consistent with the market. In fact, the market's trending to smaller units, so I think 700 is a very generous size and something, just kind of offering to modernize the regulation. The parking ratio, we discussed previously, something very consistent with what's happening in town, does reduce the impervious surface. You just don't, you know, the parking regulation as currently existing in CDD-1 is somewhat outdated in that it has, frankly, too many cars, and, you know, we don't see a need for it. Again, bring it in line and more consistent with other zones in town that have worked just fine, certainly on the properties that I've developed in town, they work fine with the reduced parking. The 830G is obvious, you know, it's not something that my company builds. You know, I kind of equate it to, you know, if Neiman Marcus wanted to come to town and build a store, and they went before you and said, you know, "We want to build a Neiman Marcus store, it's, you know, it caters to a higher-end clientele, it's of high quality," and you said, "Well, you know, we really don't want a Neiman Marcus here, we really want a J.C. Penney, and, you know, we don't want it to look that way, and we don't want it to serve that clientele." I believe the board should have the choice to make those decisions either way. I think having 830G as a de facto in the regulation is something that just drives you to one decision, and will only let the land be developed, certainly in my view, in an underutilized way. I think it's certainly up to your view. I'm not here exploiting 830G. You know, 830G was designed to allow for greater densities, to compensate for the reduction in rental revenue, and I'm not here doing that, and my density is right on point with your regulation. Certainly, if another, you know, an 830G applicant would, without question, probably be doing 300 units on the same amount of land that we're doing 167, so, you know, I'm asking for you to let my company build what it's known for and what it's good at, and build to a segment of the market that we're familiar with, and we think, frankly, is good for Milford, and serves a lot of the corporate tenants of Milford, and a lot of the, you know, the area businesses. You know, we work with every major area business on a daily basis, and, you know, we'd like to continue to offer a great product for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solkas, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there questions from board members for the applicant on the text changes only right now? Go ahead. Yes. Yeah. Okay, well, if there's no comments or questions, no comments, no questions from the board, this is a public hearing, and we invite anyone from the public that would like to speak first in favor of the text regulation changes to please come forward, state your name and address, and if you would, limit your comments to about three minutes. Anyone in favor? Good evening.
Good evening, board. Dan Gorman, 114 Beach Avenue, Milford. I am in favor of the project. Basically, Bob Smith has done a lot of projects in Milford, I believe over 40 projects, top quality, really, you know, top-notch stuff. I think it's added to the value of Milford. I think he'll continue to do that, and I think this is a terrific project over there, and I think by diluting it with affordable housing, we're really, I don't think we need that in that spot for Milford, even though, you know, a lot of people think it's a good spot, but the type of work he does, I just don't think it'll fit in. So I'm definitely in favor, you know, in favor of his, the way he has it lined up, and I think it'll be a great project and add a big addition to Milford. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the text changes? All right, seeing none, if there is anyone that would like to speak that is opposed to the text changes, if they could step forward again, state your name and address, and if you would limit your comments to about three minutes. Anyone that is opposed? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kim Rose. I live at 292 Nagatuck Avenue, and I am also the state representative in the 118th District. I am in disagreement with this application on so many levels. I am absolutely embarrassed after hearing some of the comments that I just heard in support of this application, such as diluting it with affordable housing, the density is to make up for the rent reductions. That is not the intent of 8-30G. 8-30G is to encourage affordable housing, housing that our police, our firemen, our teachers, and middle-income people can actually afford to live in our neighborhood. I take those comments about Neiman Marcus and J.C. Pennies, I'm really, really disappointed to hear that kind of talk come out of anyone's mouth. As you know, I've sat on this board, I was the vice chairman for a year and a half. A perfect example, the application that was just previously withdrawn. The developer was nice enough and kind enough to talk to the neighbors in Walnut Beach to talk about it, but here you had two applications asking you to change our zoning regulations. We have regulations in place for a reason, and not at the whim of whatever developer decides to come in and do on a particular parcel of property for their own personal I don't necessarily have a problem with reducing the size of the units, that's certainly a reasonable decision that you might want to make. As far as parking, from what I've seen in every other mass development, there's never enough parking. I have worked for seven years to change state statute 8-30G. I have fought 8-30G probably 10 or 15 years, and back then I was told, "Kim, no one will ever change that statute." That's how difficult it is to make any changes. We have a bill now in Hartford, it's sitting in the governor's office, we are hoping that he will sign it, we're actually hoping that he will not veto it. If it sits on Saturday at midnight, if he does not sign it, it becomes law. This is a perfect example of where affordable housing should go. You know that, it's sewn there. If this bill passes and we do reach a moratorium, that does not in any way stop our responsibility for continuing to build affordable housing in Milford. We will have to put in 400 to 500 more units after the moratorium is in place to reach a second moratorium. So we have a responsibility here to follow the state law, to not change a zone, a complete zone. That means if you change the zone, anywhere in that zone, there will be no affordable housing required. So I really hope and ask that you think long and hard on this application, do the right things, stand up for what is right. This is your board, this is your zone regulations, and in my opinion, you should stand strong and not cave into a developer's whim. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak against?
Yes.
My name is Dominic Cotton, I live at 60 Corona Drive in Milford. As I look out at you guys, I realize that any decision that you make here has long-term repercussions. When we stand before you, I look at a decision like this, this can have a 20-year repercussion for our city. Now, I went up to Hartford, and I listened to all the advocates and all the people that spoke out against the bill that Kim is talking about for 10 hours. And I got the opportunity to speak out. Obviously, I was in favor of what the committee was putting forward, because it was reasonable, and it gave cities the opportunity to be able to designate where affordable housing could be, to get extra points for that. And there are several different parts that go within that. One is that the bill that's before the governor has a sunset provision, because they're going to look at each town and see what they do within that, and whether they work to find affordable housing within them is truly important. And, you know, I look at the financial repercussions that this has on our city, because this is not just one decision. I think on the second page here is another decision that you guys have over 178 Seaside Avenue. Those are interconnected, because if you can reach a moratorium and you keep this zone within that right, and you find people that are willing to work within that, then we won't have situations like the one that people at 178 Seaside Avenue are facing, where they have this small parcel of land, and they're going to jam-pack everything into a neighborhood. So you know what? You guys have the power to fix that, rather than wasting our money on attorneys, or parking studies, or seeing whether, you know, somebody can see you from a quarter-mile away when they're pulling out, or whether the fire marshal can, like, you know, back a fire truck in and be able to turn it around in the facilities. Come on, guys. We waste our money when we spend it on these things, rather than doing what we should be doing. You want to take that away from the city? You're going to make us look appalling. You know, if the governor goes ahead and vetoes this because of a decision that's made here, it's ridiculous. I've gone out and I've lobbied this to several people from different large cities that don't have this issue, and they say, "We don't have this issue," and they were going to fight against this. And you don't know how much effort went in to try to help our city because of all these situations that have occurred in different areas in Woodmont, or when I come out of Silver Sands and I look at the big project that they stuffed in on a small parcel of property, and their second floor looks into other people's bedrooms, you know, that's what you're faced with here. Do you want to spend money because your constituents are going to come up here and they're going to say, "You know, this is our neighborhood"? You want to jam-pack this stuff in here? It's because of the decision that you make right here, on the first part, that you're going to have more people that are going to come up here, and they're going to be angry, and they're going to be upset, and at the end of the day, unless they can find some safety factor that prevents the 830G, and I have looked over the regulation at length, then there's going to be nothing that you can do, nothing. But if you can help gain a moratorium, and the moratorium says that we need to, like, figure out ways to be able to bring people in and continue to build the housing till we hit, like, the 10%, or we can, we end up doing things like we'd have to, we have other affordable housing projects, but they're not deed-restricted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that is, would like to speak opposed to the text change? Good evening.
Good evening. Susan Glenn in 99 Carlson Drive. I'm going to reiterate the comments I made at the last public hearing. You, the board, develop and consider and adopt regulations based on the needs of our community. To start changing the text of those regulations because a developer asks you to, I feel sets a dangerous precedent, when the board, I believe, has the option in certain instances of making exceptions. Once you change the text, though, that becomes the rule going forward. In this particular situation, the board created a regulation to identify areas where the board felt 830G applications were appropriate. You know, I said the last time that to now turn around and say, "Well, we're going to remove that now because this developer has asked," is really unfair to the residents that are being subjected to the predatory developments that are being shoved into their single-family neighborhoods, you know, these big, huge monstrosities, 12, 15 units crammed onto a half-acre, 3/4 of an acre, where, because this area where you have stated, "This is where we'd like to see 830G," that's appropriate, that's where it's appropriate. And I'm going to echo the thoughts of Ms. Rose, that I'm going to ask you to stand strong and think of your community, and think of the residents of your community, and stick to the regulation as it is and not make the change to the 830G component. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is opposed to the text changes? All right, seeing none. Mr. Smith, you have an opportunity to rebut anything that was said by the people that spoke.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, 830G is in all your regulations. It's in every non-industrial zone in the city, 830G can be deployed. This is not going away. If I was a greedy developer, I'd be building 350 units on this property, not 167, because I could if I used 830G. Any developer would not use 830G and follow the regulations, they would exploit it to the maximum. That's not what I'm doing here. I'm building a very balanced, moderately-dense project conforming with your regulations. I have no obligation to do that when I'm 830G. So please remember, 830G is in all your regulations, all non-industrial zones. It may be invisible, but it's always there, and it always, you know, most likely will be there for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. As part of our public hearing, anyone that has, that did approach and did speak on this issue, has an opportunity at this time to rebut any of the comments made by Mr. Smith. So that opportunity is now. So if anyone that has spoken would like to speak and rebut what Mr. Smith had, now is All right, seeing none, we'll move on. If no objections from the board, we'll close the public hearing part. All right, this part of the public hearing, this part, the public hearing part of this will be closed. Is there any, does the board have, does the board want to propose a motion on this, on these items?
Actually, I ask a question of Mr. Solkas before we proceed. Mr. Solkas, this is seeking to change the language of CDD-1, the regulations pertaining to that district. Are you able to tell us over the last, let's say, five to seven years, how many multifamily projects have been built in the CDD-1 zone, and how many, and have they set aside affordable units?
Since the creation of this regulation, which became effective in 2004, we have never had an application for an affordable 830G project in the CDD zone, any of the CDD zones.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
I have a couple of comments. On the proposed changes, I, first off, I just want to state that building the apartments in this zone, I think, is a good thing. The changing of the sizes down to 700 square feet, I have no problems with. The changing in the parking, I have no problems with. However, I have a very big problem with changing our regulation to not allow affordable housing. It has been stated by several people that we have things that have been approved for 830Gs, that if they go, once they through, we would reach a moratorium. But they're not under review in any building department, zoning, or any place. To put our faith in that they're going to be built, I think would be a very big mistake. If they don't go through, we're going to be very short. As it stands right now, we need, like, 461 points in order to reach a moratorium. My understanding is, is that with the projects that have been approved, and that are under construction and will be completed within the next couple of months, we are only halfway there. To put, also, to put faith in that the governor will sign the bill, which actually would allow us to probably get close to a moratorium, I don't know if we would actually get a moratorium by the changes that have been proposed. Again, I think the board would be very shortsighted to approve the change to allow this development to go in without 830G. If it does, the other point is, we would have 163 units more that are not affordable housing, that if we want to go for a moratorium, those are more points we have to go and try to get. And to just put our faith in saying, or banking saying, "Well, we're going to get one moratorium," again, I think that's shortsighted. We should be fighting to get as many moratoriums and as much points as we can to prevent the 830G projects being inserted and inundated into our single-family residents' areas. That's basically my thing onto it. You know, not only, you know, I made, the comment was also made by Mr. Smith, that, you know, the 830G is not going to go away, which is true. So the more points we can get in the bank, the better off the city's going to be, the better off the residents in this town are going to be. And I, again, I think we'd be very shortsighted to let this regulation change. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Mr. Quish.
Yes, I'd like to echo comments made by those in opposition and Mr. Grant. You know, especially in light of what's going to happen later tonight, where a 12-unit or whatever... or whatever proposal is just on one acre of land, it just seems like that's something we should try to stop. And we can't really, because we'd lose in court, but, so it would be an insult to those who have existing housing, 830G housing next to them, and future projects that will be built if we don't capitalize on this opportunity to get 830G where it was planned. So I would make a motion to deny.
I would second.
Do we want to take each one of these items as a separate item?
I don't think we need to. If, if the project goes through at 830G, parking and size requirements are not required.
Mr. Quish, is your motion then to deny all the text changes?
Ah, yes, it is.
Mr. Grant, is that your second?
Yes, I'll second to deny.
To deny all the motion, all the text amendment changes?
Yes.
Okay. Is there questions, comments from the board on the motion? All right, seeing none. All in favor of the motion to deny the text regulation changes? Say aye. Opposed?
I need, I need a break down.
So that's a, one, two, three, four. Four, two, one, two, three. Do you want to roll call?
Yes, please.
Could we do a roll call vote? Mr. Dolan.
I'm, I'm in favor of Mr. Quish's motion.
Mr. Grant?
In favor of denying the motion, I mean, approving the motion to deny.
Opposed to the motion?
Mr. Moore?
Oppose the emotion.
Mr. Barone?
Oppose to the motion.
Mr. Nichols?
In favor.
Oppose to the motion.
In favor.
And I am in favor. Based on that, the motion carries to deny? We have five to four. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Item four is 92 Plains Road, 100 Plains Road, 150 Post Road, and MAP 53 Block 304, Lot 88A, Zone CDD-1. Petition of Metro 150 LLC for special permit and site plan review approval to construct multifamily residential at MAP 43 Block 304, Lot 80, and MAP 53 Block 304, Lots 82, 83, and 88A, of which Jordan Realty LLC is the owner. Who would be presenting that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's sort of an issue now.
Well, that's, I need to know if, if, based on the motion, if that still is going to be presented, would it be withdrawn or tabled?
It can't be, it can't even be, I mean, they'll do it, they're going to, I'm sure their attorney is going to tell you, but even if you approved it, they can't build it because you didn't change the regulation, so.
All right, so, yes.
Actually, I have a procedural question. You announced the vote as five to four, correct? We need, you need to have a majority of the commission, and five is not a majority.
Mr. Sulcus, is that?
Well, it's, it's, it's a simple majority that is what's needed. The question is whether or not it's a majority, a simple majority of the entire board or of those present. Do, and we have, we have a quorum, so.
I'm not a legal person, but my understanding is, is that we have a quorum. We had a majority of the quorum. I don't know, Mr. Sutton, possibly you could weigh in on that. Okay. We would have to get a clarification, but I, my understanding is, is that it's a majority of those present.
In my understanding, I was that it's a majority of the commission.
All right, Mr. Sulcus, can we get?
We'll have to, we'll have to get a clarification from a legal.
Okay. All right, then that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll, we'll leave it stand as it is right now, and we'll get a clarification from city attorney.
So do, would you like to table the second application pending?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so item four will be tabled, and we will move on to item five. It's, the public hearing was closed in reference to 178 Seaside Avenue, Zone R-12.5. Petition of Thomas Lynch Esquire for special permit coastal management and site plan review approval to construct 12 residential units under Connecticut General Statute's 8-30G on MAP 35 Block 434 Parcel 8, of which GAMSLC is the owner. We had closed the public hearing, and I know that the boards had some thoughts on putting some motions, amendments to, to this project. Is there comment from the board? Mr. Grant?
I have the following comments. As I stated at the last meeting, to try to make this a little bit more tolerable for the neighborhood, I propose that Unit D3 be eliminated so that the last building would only be two units instead of three, which would increase the rear yard and also push the dumpster further away from the rear yard fence because of the neighbor in the back had a complaint about the noise and the smell possibly. And I, I've seen that happen before, so I think that was a reasonable request. The number of affordable units would still remain at four. The area of the removed unit shall, I would suggest, be substantially landscaped with tall and thick vegetation to obscure the mainy buildings from both the rear and the side property lines. An additional landscape buffer I did suggest containing tall trees be installed on the north and south sides towards the front of the property so that the existing houses would have a visual screen between them and the, and the development. Also, the setback on the north side is set at eight feet. I would suggest to push it to 10. And extend the buffer of high trees across the whole back north side. And, let's see. And that the, if the one unit is removed, the affordable and marketing plan would have to be redone with the removal of a unit and would be accepted by the city. Let's see, what else? So the trees would be added along the 170 Seaside Avenue side and also the 182 Seaside Avenue side. The setback on that side also would be 10 feet. Also, the buildings are very similar to other 830G buildings that have been pushed into the neighborhoods. So what I'd like to suggest is that they be changed a little bit architecturally to try to look more like, instead of a box, look a little bit more like a home or a condo. I did have a quick little sketch, which, that I would propose to maybe have buildings A and C have the fronts changed a little bit. Right now, they protrude out a foot. What I would suggest is they go out two feet on each side and one in the center to kind of give each building a little bit different of an architectural look, and also a little bit more of a home instead of a, like I said, instead of a box. So I have a couple of other things here. I don't know if the, Mr. Lynch? Yeah. Just so you take a look at, I know your architect's not here tonight, so that's kind of what I kind of suggested. Pass that down. So those are basically my comments. Is to recap, is to remove Unit D3. Affordable units still remain at four. The area of, of the removed unit be landscaped. And along the 170 Seaside, add trees up towards the front to screen the existing house from the development. Basically, a buffer to extend to the front of the property. The north side, which is the 182 side, the buffer go from eight feet to 10 feet. And a tree line be placed along that whole, along that whole property line with screening type trees. And then, of course, the updating, the marketing and affordable plan would have to come to the city. Those, so that, and then changing the architectural fronts a little bit to make them so they're not so boxy looking and they give a little definition and a little character.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Quish.
I was not here at the last meeting when this was discussed, but just looking at the language here, you talk about tall trees. I think it would probably be smart to put, you know, it's kind of a nebulous word, it can be tall, could mean different things to different people. So put something like 10 or 15 feet at maturity, or whatever, someone who knows more about trees than I do can put something in, but I would just make it as specific as you could.
Mr. Grant, do you want to put your comments in the form of a motion?
Okay. I'd like to move approval of the project with conditions. As I previously stated, removal of one unit, affordable units stay at four. The, the area of the removed unit shall be landscaped with tall and thick vegetation to obscure the remaining buildings from the rear and side property lines. An additional landscape buffer containing tall trees to obstruct the view of the parking lot shall be added along the property line with 170 Seaside Avenue. And the location of the two guest parking spaces closest to the front of the property line. The buffer shall be extended to the front property line in as far as it can extend without interfering with site lines for vehicles entering and exiting the site. The existing eight-foot setback on the 182 Seaside be changed to 10 feet. And the 10-foot buffer shall extend along the entire property line and shall extend towards the front of the property line in as far as it can, again, without obstructing the view from entering or exiting the site. And the buildings A and C, that the fronts of the buildings be changed architecturally so that not all four buildings look the same, that they have some relief to them. And that the affordable marketing and plan be updated and accepted by the city.
Is there a second on that motion?
I second a motion.
Are there questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
In Mr. Grant's reading of the motion, he just, if I heard him correctly, said just the removal of one unit. Does he want to be specific as to which unit?
Mr. Grant? Just specifying which unit, I think it was D3 that you were looking to?
Oh, sorry, yeah, Unit D3.
All right, there's a motion on the table that's been seconded. Are there any comments, questions on the motion? Mr. Dolan?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I'm going to approve, I'll vote in favor of Mr. Grant's motion. I think the entire board is probably with me that nobody wants to see this application get built, but as we've seen in the past with these 830G applications, our power is extremely limited. The board tries to do what it can to try to limit these 830G applications within our power. That's why a majority of the people here tonight voted against the zone change to try to make sure that these 830G applications don't go into neighborhoods where they don't belong, such as this one. But that being said, if we, I thought the gentleman who spoke in the orange hit the nail on the head. Money spent fighting appeals, which aren't going to win, is not money well spent. The board should do what it can, it has a limited authority to do it, but do whatever small measures it can to prevent these 830G applications going into the wrong spot. So making the changes tonight, as Mr. Grant obviously spent a lot of time doing, is one of those small steps that we can take. And making sure that 830G applications go into the places where they should be going, which is not in dense areas like the one here tonight, that's what we can do. So I'm going to vote in for it as well, reluctantly.
Are there other comments?
You work for the city! You work for the people!
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Margaret!
Are there other comments, questions? Mr. Barone?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think that there's a need in, in a lot of cities for the 830G housing. In this particular case, I find that this is not the intent of the law. This is going to abuse the neighborhood, it will abuse the neighbors. I will venture to say that there'll probably be some property value that decreases. This is not the spirit of the law. Our hands are tied. If we say no, then you can take us to court and we're going to lose and it costs the city a lot of money. So we, our, our hands are pretty much tied on this and we don't have much of a choice. I think that, I'd like to see some builders have a little bit more responsibility to Milford and to the residents in Milford when they propose these projects. I don't think anybody on the board is against an 830 project, 830G project in its appropriate place and within the spirit of the law. I just don't think this project is within the spirit of the law. My hands are tied, I'll end up voting for it, but this is abuse.
Are there, are there other comments? Mr. Grant?
Yeah, one additional comment. Very truthfully, I'd like to see the developer withdraw this project and actually go build an 830G project on Plains Road, because the other developer probably isn't going to want to.
Are there other, other comments from board members? I, I think my comments would be the same as what's been echoed here by the, the other people on the board that have talked. We are reluctantly going to vote on this. We, we put some changes forth trying to make it a little easier on, on the neighbors. I know that that isn't going to satisfy many people, understood, but it will go to court and it will get probably sided with the developer if we don't, if we don't try to make some change. try to make some changes to this to, to move it forward. Uh, it's one of the reasons that I as well voted against, or in favor of the text, of opposing the text changes, is because I see that the CDD dash one zone where, on Plains Road, was the place to put affordable housing. And we lose, in my mind, a sense of some credibility when we go to court. If this goes to court, then, you know, a judge may very well say, well, you had an opportunity to enforce putting it somewhere, and you chose not to do that, so I think that that could side against this. I, I mean, obviously, that's speculation and just my thoughts, but again, enough said for me. There's a motion that's on the floor, it's been seconded. Mr. Quish?
And I appreciate the thought that John put into this, and, um, and that it may appease some of the neighbors. I cannot support it. We made some slight adjustments on Meadowside Road to a project that just still is not benefiting the community in any way, shape, or form, so I understand, I probably lose this, but I cannot support it.
Other, um, are there other comments from the board? Okay. So seeing none, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, all in favor of Mr. Grant's Um, a, a roll call? Okay, a, a roll call. Mr. Dolan?
Favor.
Mr. Grant?
In favor.
Mr. Sutton?
In favor.
Mr. Moore?
Denial.
Mr. Barone?
In favor.
Mr. Nichols?
Deny.
In favor.
Opposed to the motion?
And I'll be in favor. Motion carries. Onto the next item is new business, is item six, three ninety-five Orange Ave, uh, request for bond return, request by Angelo, Lisi, and Michael Field for the return of their subdivision bond in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, which represents total bond payment of twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty, less two thousand six fifty-five, which is ten percent withheld for one-year maintenance, in accordance with memo by Gregory Pedluski, City Engineer, dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. Mr. Sulkis?
Yeah, this is a standard administrative, uh, issue where when a subdivision is approved, and when it actually gets built, they're required to post a bond to guarantee that the work within the public rights of way and other areas that the city has an interest in are actually done. So in this particular case, that work was done, uh, so under our subdivision regulations, they can ask for the bond to be released, uh, and then by regulation, we retain ten percent of it for another year to make sure that there are no other issues that pop up.
Do we need to take a, make a motion and vote on this?
Yes, you do.
Is there a, is there any questions for Mr. Sulkis on this item? All right, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Sutton?
I move to approve the bond return.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries. Yes, Mr. Barone? Do, is this something we have to talk about?
I don't know. Uh, Mr. Chairman, to go back to the Seaside Avenue property, um, we have approved that, but we have asked for changes to be made, including to the structure itself. Don't we need to get this back first before we approve this?
Uh, I believe what we've done, we've approved with the conditions that we set forth. It will go to the developer, and if he chooses not to accept those, then it'll come back to us.
Okay, now if he chooses to accept those...
If he chooses to accept those, then the project would move forward because we have...
Without coming back to us?
Yes, because we have approved it based on those conditions. Correct, Mr. Sulkis?
Yeah, and what I would do is, is the city planner, I would then work with them to make sure that the, the spirit of what the board wants is, is carried through in those plans. So for instance, you talked about ten to fifteen-foot-high trees, I'd probably myself go higher, because we want something that's, you know, at least as high as the buildings. Uh, you know, they, we talked about articulation, there was an example that was handed out about building articulation, and, you know, obviously, they'll have to work with their architect and see if they can come up with something that is close to or within the spirit of what the board wants.
Thank you. Um, next item is liaison reports. Mr. Grant? Um, oh, no, your subcommittee, sorry, any liaison reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to regulation subcommittee update.
All right, we have, uh, three, uh, regulation changes to propose this evening. The first one, uh, is, uh, at the present time, we have no definition in our, uh, regulations for takeout restaurants. So, uh, the, the subcommittee, uh, has reviewed this for a couple of months, and we came up with some language, uh, to basically, uh, put a regu, uh, put a definition within the, uh, regulations. That's the first one. And basically, in relationship to that, uh, the parking set, uh, regulation will need to be, uh, updated to include the words, uh, fast food in, uh, section, uh, five-point-one, number eight, figure two, uh, would have to add in fast foods so that it meets the parking requirements, or actually, I'm sorry, section seven, uh, so it meets the requirements for parking. And then the third one is really just some housekeeping. A while back, uh, the board approved to change the heading, uh, of drive-through establishments to drive-in and drive-through establishments, uh, and, uh, in reviewing the regulations and reading through them, they are in a section five-point-one, point four-point-one right now, which is really not the right spot for them. They really should be, uh, in section four, I'm sorry, Article Four, section four-point-one, and they should be a new one, be point seventeen. Uh, so basically, it's just renumbering those particular regulations from, from Article Five to Article Four. I would put a motion forward that the board approve to send these, uh, regulations out to the various agencies that need to review it, uh, so that's my motion.
Are there any questions? Mr. Quish? No. Um, is there a second on the motion?
I second.
Any questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, we'll send those on. Next item is approval of minutes. Mr. Chair? I'm not sure I saw minutes in there.
You should just be aware that those minutes say that they were taken and done by Phyllis Leggett and then transcribed by Meg, and that's not correct. Meg took those minutes, and Meg transcribed them, so I just want the record to be clear that those minutes are the product of our new, uh, you know, recording secretary.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve...
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Mr. Dolan? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Chair report? I have no report. Staff report?
None this evening, obviously, I'll, I'll get back to you for the next meeting regarding that, uh, vote issue. Typically, and what we'll probably end up doing with that, and this is something they, they've often talked about at, uh, the seminars that I go to, and it rarely comes up here, and of course, it came up tonight. Typically, when we do motions, they should always be in the affirmative, so it's easy, you're, you're sort of doing a double negative in, in what was done tonight. You made a motion to deny, and then you're approving to deny versus if you just made a motion to approve, it's real clean that there's been a denial. But the issue, again, regarding the, uh, the board, whether it's of the board present or the entire board, um, we're going to get clarification. I think it's of the entire board, not of the present, um, but we'll get, we'll get clarification from the city attorney on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Quish? Okay, motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Check. Thanks, Mike.